Good morning. I will now call to order the July 22, 2021 Business Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, roll call Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you very much. Stand and I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you when the time is right. Registration for public comment will close at five minutes past 10:00. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First up is the Consent Agenda, and Christina, would you please read the Consent Agenda by title only?
Yes, to start off with Health Housing and Human Services, number one, approval of amendment number 01 to the subrecipient agreement with the Mental Health and Addictions Association of Oregon for older adult peer support services. Amendment adds $19,498.88 for a maximum grant value of $175,489.91. Funded through federal pass-through and state of Oregon mental health program, no county general funds are involved. Number two, approval of amendment number one with the subrecipient agreement with the Mental Health and Addiction Association of Oregon for alcohol and drug recovery peer-delivered services. Amendment will add $87,976.43 for a maximum grant valued at $791,797.79. Funded through the federal pass-through and state of Oregon, excuse me, mental health program, no county general funds are involved. Number three, approval of a subrecipient agreement with the Clackamas County Children's Commission for the Help Me Grow Program, maximum contract value of $72,000. Funded through the Health Share of Oregon Grant, no county general funds are involved. Number four, approval of an agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for FTA 5311 Rural Transportation Funds for operations funding for Mount Hood Express, maximum agreement of $636,999 through special transportation funds and $9,500 through county general funds. Number five, approval to apply for a grant from Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division for youth and community to fund PreventNet community school sites in Clackamas County, total of $1 million, $50,000 per PreventNet site per year for two years. Funded through the Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division, no county general funds are involved. Number six, approval of an inter-agency subrecipient agreement with Foothills Community Church Molalla Adult Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Maximum agreement is $177,884. Funded through the Older American Act Ride Connection Pass-Through and Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, no county general funds are involved. Number seven, approval of an agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for 5310 Enhanced Mobility Funds for preventative maintenance and operations funding for Mount Hood Express, transportation-reaching people, and transportation services to Boring. Maximum agreement is $215,111. Funded through the Federal Transit Administration, 5310 Elderly Disabled Transportation Grant, no county general funds are involved. Number eight, approval of a local subrecipient grant or agreement, amendment number four, with Life Works Northwest to provide relief nursery services in Clackamas County. Amendment adds $72,000 for a maximum value of $290,260 and extends the end date to June 30, 2022, funded through county general funds. Number nine, approval of an inter-agency subrecipient agreement with Hoodland Senior Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Maximum agreement is $82,728. Funded through the Older American Act Ride Connection Pass-Through and Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, no county general funds are involved. Number 10, approval of an inter-agency subrecipient agreement with Friends of Canby Adult Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Maximum agreement is $236,735. Funded through the Older American Act Ride Connections Pass-Through and Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, no county general funds are involved. Number 11, approval of an inter-agency subrecipient agreement with the City of Sandy and Sandy Senior and Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Maximum agreement is $194,706. Funded through the Older American Act Ride Connection Pass-Through and Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, no county general funds are involved. Number 12, approval of a local subrecipient grant, number two, with immigration and refugee community organizations to provide kindergarten readiness partnerships and innovation summer extension services. Amendment adds $12,527 for a maximum value of $47,527 and extends the end date to September 30, 2021. Funded through the State of Oregon Department of Education through its Early Learning Division, no general county funds are involved. Number 13, approval of a contract with Alpha Energy Savers Incorporated for the Weatherization Major Measures Contract. The total contract value is $1 million, $50,000. Funded through the Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Number 14, the contract with Electech Lighting and Electric for the Weatherization Specialty Contractors. Total contract value is $900,000. Funded through the Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Number 15, approval of a contract with Energy Comfort Construction and the Weatherization Major Measure and Specialty Contractors. No contract, excuse me, the total contract value is $1,950,000. Through Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Number 16, approval of a contract with Four Seasons Heating and Air Conditioning for the Weatherization Specialty Contractors. Total contract value is $900,000. Through Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Number 17, approval of a contract with Good Energy retrofit for the Weatherization Major Measure Contractors. Total contract value is $1 million, $50,000. Through Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Number 18, approval of a contract with Green Energy Solutions for the Weatherization Major Measures Contractors. Total contract value is $1 million, $50,000. Through Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Number 19, approval of a contract with Richard Family Incorporated for the Weatherization Major Measure Contractors. Total contract is $1 million, $50,000. Through the Oregon Housing and Community Services, no county general funds are involved. Under Department of Transportation and Development, number one, approval of the contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the Arista Area Paving Package. Contract value is $238,182.50. Funded through the Community Road Fund, no county general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a contract with Pacific Landscape Services Incorporated for landscape services. The total contract not to exceed $1,463,880, including $450,000 for on-call services. Funded through the County Road Fund, no county general funds are involved. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a purchase from Structured Communications Systems Incorporated for the Palo Alto Firewall Hardware, Software, and Maintenance. The purchase and three years of maintenance is $262,762.84 through the county general funds. And last is County Counsel, approval of an advance from Metro for $3 million with the option to request an additional $2 million. Funding is to provide supportive housing services and to be repaid through the county dispersment of imposed income taxes collected by Metro.
And that's your Consent Agenda. Well, thank you Christina for all that reading. That was excellent. On my count, there's 24 Consent Agenda items, and that represents very busy departments doing fine work to deliver services to our citizens in Clackamas County. Thank you all for contributing. Is there any Commissioner who would like to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Schull to approve the Consent Agenda. Any other discussions? Seeing none, Christina, please call the poll. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion is approved 5-0. Gary, what's next?
Chair Smith, next, the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors.
Thank you. I will now announce the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board for the Consent Agenda.
Next is the NCPRD Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the Consent Agenda by title only?
Yes, we only have one item. It's approval of a subrecipient grant agreement 22-015 between North Clackamas Recreation District and Health Housing and Human Services Social Division. Agreement not to exceed $424,192. Funded through the Older American Act, Oregon Department of Human Services, State Unit of Aging, Federal Transportation Administration Funds, through Ride Connection Incorporated and other funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you Christina. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I've moved to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved for approval of the Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, please take the poll. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Smith? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, what's next?
Next, you will adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. I will now announce the Board will adjourn as the NCPRD Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. We will now move to public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take the first person from the blue cards. Up first, Yvonne Lazarus. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning Commissioners. This morning, I'm going to speak about someone that I happened to run into while I was on my iPad. And his name is Richard Swift, and he no longer works here. I ran across his article in the paper as he was leaving office on February 19. Richard Swift said his departure of office was for two reasons. One, he wanted to go see his folks, and the other of being the county's politics of late. Now, we're nonpartisan up here. There is no politics. He called for Mark Schull to step down because of racist and homophobic statements, working against our equity and inclusion of Clackamas community residents. Swift said, "In all the power the top has, a responsibility to rise our voices." The political change is hard because what you get is change in policy. All right, this man was here a decade, and he talks about politics. There is none up here. That's what got me into this. This is bad, and we all know it. Two people came in, I'm going to reiterate it, had new ideas. Doesn't mean they were political. It means they had new ideas for this community, and they were stonewalled, and worse. People in Clackamas County, come up here. It's easy to get on Zoom, I know. It isn't easy to get out of bed and come up here. Come up here, let them see your face, and talk to them, so you can make honest decisions about stuff, about who you're going to vote for up here, who you're not, and we don't have this going on. And I'm not doing this to you guys. I'm doing it to the community out there. Come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Elvis Clark, please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello Commissioners, nice day. I'm Elvis Clark. I live in Milwaukee, Oregon, and that's my particulars. I was back here talking about the metro income tax again, because I realized that one of the issues that's really big for Clackamas residents especially is that there be established some kind of income threshold for requiring a tax return for the metro income tax, because as it is, if you don't have a threshold, the threshold would be, if you earn less than this, you wouldn't have to file a tax return with Metro or Portland, City of Portland in this case. And the reason it's important is we're facing many millions of dollars in aggregate tax preparation costs, because what I did is I looked at Oregon Department of Revenue figures, and there's like 147,000 Clackamas residents that will be having to submit a return, and the tax preparation costs can be like up to $90 for a separate Oregon state tax form. And so you multiply all this together, and you get like $10 million or more, $12 million. And that's on top of the other administrative costs that government is already incurring because of the administration of this income tax. And so I'm hoping that the Board will express the sentiment that we need a threshold where we can balance against or cut down these aggregate tax preparation costs. And I know there's a balancing act between when you want to make sure you're getting everybody that should be paying the tax, but there needs to be more balance between not having a threshold where everybody submits and incurs a tax preparation cost versus nobody. But yeah, anyways, that's my testimony. Thank you all.
Very interesting comments. Thank you. Up next, Les Poole, please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. A couple of subjects. One is that I will be responding to some of the comments and things that I made and the response I received last week when I was making my public communication. Before that, I'd just like to put out a subject that I know we're going to hear about, and it's so troubling, and that is that 400,000 acres of Oregon is on fire. That's three times as big as the fire that swept down from Detroit all the way to Estacada. And regardless of any cause or finger pointing, it is just so traumatic. And as someone that's been awfully close to fires and helped folks evacuate and breathe a lot of smoke from fires in the past, and own property that's come within inches of burning up, I just want to continue to encourage the public to be extra, extra careful. No fireworks, no campfires, none of that, you know. No cigarettes out the window, ever. Why are you smoking in the first place? So, you know, I could spend the rest of my time talking about it, but I'd just be talking circles, and I wouldn't do us any good except to say, "Let's just support our firefighters and pray that no one else gets hurt." The other subject, of course, dovetails back to last week's question that I've asked repeatedly, and that question is a very troubling one, and it's about county business. It's about the conduct of a Commissioner who appears to have been deeply involved in undermining or removing or forcing Commissioner Schull to resign shortly after he came into office, and I mean very shortly. And while we're all free to say and think what we will or what we want, there's a point where as an elected official, when one starts spending money, campaign money, paying consultants to go after an incoming Commissioner who you'll never run against, Commissioner Fisher runs two years from now, or I mean 2022, Mr. Schull ran in 2020. Obviously, why then did Commissioner spend campaign money in early 2021 on attacking Mr. Schull? And I received a response that was a statement from the county or from Chair Fisher, I mean Chair Fisher, Chair Smith, that there are other venues to pursue this problem, and there are. I'm sure they'll be pursued, but make no mistake, this is the primary venue. This needs to be addressed. This cannot be washed away. So, thank you as always. Good to see Commissioner smiling.
Thank you very much for your comments. Up next, Desi Nicodemus, please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Desi Nicodemus, Milwaukee, Oregon. Good morning Commissioners. I'm Desi Nicodemus, the newest Milwaukee City Councilor.
Congratulations on your
Thank you.
Service.
I sit on the PARB and NCPRD's District Advisory Board. I'm here today to talk about Milwaukee Bay Park. Although I am new to council, the relationship between the city and NCPRD has been in place for more than 30 years. In 2018, NCPRD led a design process for the next and final phase of Milwaukee Bay Park. As a part of the district's outreach, staff connected with more than 1,200 people, both inside and outside of Milwaukee. The people of Milwaukee and the many visitors to Milwaukee Bay Park that live outside the city are excited about this project and want it to move forward. Parks, more now than ever, are necessary spaces for our communities to thrive. Parks attract residents and businesses, increase revenue for communities, spur private investment, and increase job opportunities. Vibrant parks and green spaces are at the center of resilient and equitable communities. To demonstrate our city's commitment to Milwaukee Bay Park, the city initiated an IGA with NCPRD to outline our funding commitment to the project. That IGA was executed in 2019. Again, in 2019, the city also worked with haste to approve an amendment to our master IGA to allow for the new membership structure of the District Advisory Board. We have proven time and time again that we are ready to step up and support this project. Our community weighed in on the design and is excited to proceed. I ask you to stop with the procedural delays and move forward with the contracts that are needed to build the park that Milwaukee and the greater district deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yep, I just want to thank the Councilor for his comments and look forward to actually meeting with you for our first time. I look forward to that day. Hopefully, I don't know if that's scheduled yet, but hopefully we can have a chat. And also looking forward, there are several agreements that we have constantly been trying to procure and get signatures on to make this project move forward, and we're really excited about this project. We want to see it move forward. We know how the years and years of dedication, commitment to that park. So, I want to just make sure we have all the Ts crossed, the Is dotted, and all those agreements, and there'll be more agreements to come. And so hopefully we can get past this one little glitch and move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I'd like to see us move forward too, because we've had a long history, thank you, of remarking on the fact that we have a really long history with working with Milwaukee. And I had the privilege of being here when we built the complex that is a softball complex there, that is one of the best softball complexes in the area. And at the time, both my daughters were softball players, so of course I was fully behind that, because keeping kids in sports, an active rec, is a big, big piece in keeping kids out of trouble. And it wasn't without its controversy. If you believe it or not, there are folks that objected to it because they said it would be too noisy. And I thought to myself, well, of course, I'm biased, I have five kids, okay? And I thought, well, don't you want to hear children playing and having fun and eating the hot dogs and cheering and really becoming athletes, you know, as they do it? So, we prevailed with that. And I'm hopeful that working with Commissioner Savis, we will also prevail on this next project that we have with Milwaukee. So, a lot of fondness in my heart for what we did, and not only did we build the complex, but we also worked very hard to have a natural area associated with it. So, their walking paths, it was a combination of active rec and then kind of a natural area on top of everything else. So, we've got a long history, and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward.
Thank you Commissioner Schrader. Up next, now, hope I say your name right. Kathy Heisey, please come up and state your name and your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to address you this morning. It's so nice to see you all in person. My name is Kathy Heisey.
It's nice to see you in person, too.
It's nice for us all to be seen. I'm the Council President for Milwaukee City Council right now, and I probably should have come up with Councilor Nicodemus.
Again.
Kathy Heisey. You did say it correctly. Thank you. And I'm just here to build on the comments that Councilor Nicodemus has already made, and I appreciate hearing the feedback from Commissioner Schrader and Savis. As you all know, As you all know, when you're undertaking any capital improvement project, when you've got delays, that starts to affect the bottom line, and we're getting concerned. Initially, this was a project that was supposed to start in 2021, and now we're looking at 2022 as a potential start date, and even that is a window of opportunity that is swiftly closing. So, I am getting concerned that these ongoing delays with the IGA that was pulled off of the consent agenda for today are going to result in higher costs for taxpayers or may lead to the demise of this project that is so important to residents of all of NCPRD. This has always been conceived of as a regional benefit, not just a Milwaukee park. The Parks District in the city, as Councillor Nicodemus already pointed out, do have a long track record of working together and working timely and making things happen. And we've been able to execute swift turnarounds in IGAs in the past. When it came to building Wichita Park, many of you were opening, at that opening day, and it was one of the most wonderful public events I've ever been at. Everyone is so excited for that park to be opened. That project and those IGAs moved very quickly. It's unclear to me what is now broken in a way that seems to be jeopardizing this project and, at a minimum, is going to lead to making it more expensive. Given there are no active projects in construction currently in NCPRD and that staff have figured out a way to move forward with both Milwaukee Bay Park and the Concord School Project, I really urge you to continue to move both of these projects forward. It is going to be a busy couple of years, and I just want to point out that these are both essential to the residents of Clackamas County. There is no competition here between Milwaukee and the unincorporated areas of NCPRD. We want parks built in the district, and we support fully that both of these are critical projects. And when it comes to signing an IGA, we are more than happy to sign a IGA on the construction of Milwaukee Bay Park that has a scope that is addressing the construction of Milwaukee Bay Park. So, I just want to remind you all that building parks is what matters to our residents, and I loved Commissioner Schrader's story about those softball fields and about that walking path. That is something that our region uses every day. But building parks is what matters to our residents, not intergovernmental battles. After the year we've all been through, we all see the value of our parks more than ever, and so I really want to encourage you to get these parks built in NCPRD. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. I appreciate hearing from fellow elected officials. It's very nice, and I know you have a very busy day. You know, that Milwaukee Bay Park, I just love it. You know, we're boaters, and we're on the Lamont River quite a bit, and it's so nice because you can just take your boat up to it, dock, hop out, you know, have a picnic or whatever. And it used to be, it's been a while since I've done this, but you know, the Christmas ships would come in December, and we'd drive in and we'd go out, and it would be freezing cold, but we'd view the Christmas ships from there, too. And so it is a very nice facility, and people are using it. Okay, what is up next? That's all I see for public comment. Christina, how many do we have online?
It looks like I have four people registered online.
Okay, would you please continue with the Zoom public comment?
Absolutely. So, the first up is going to be Chris Waller. Chris, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. I'd like to start with some statements. We learned from FOIA release of Fauci's emails that COVID is a created disease. There is no such thing as a symptomatic spread. HCQ can almost entirely eradicate COVID. Everyone can be protected from this disease with preventative treatments such as ACQ, ivermectin, budesonide. COVID is a weaponized flu variant. Vaccines are gene manipulation. All of these demonstrably false and dangerous statements were made by speakers at this meeting over the last few weeks. I would hope as a board that you would step up and use all the resources available to you, including the excellent health department at your disposal, to publicly refute and rebut these harmful statements. Especially from the conservative members of the board, I would hope to hear in your Commissioner comments references to reality and a gentle nudge away from anti-science conspiracy theories. Your base might actually listen to you, and it would serve your own self-interests. After all, it's your vaccine-refusing base that will be the ones who are dying as the mortality numbers start to rise again. Every single study that's been done on vaccine hesitancy shows that the vast majority of refusers are Republicans. The reality is quite clear. Right now, deaths from COVID are almost entirely preventable. Ninety-eight percent of deaths are among the unvaccinated. As the Delta variant sweeps across the U.S., it's creating a pandemic of the unvaccinated, especially among the young. Cases of COVID rose over 50% in just the last week in Oregon, and deaths doubled. Since July 1st, the number of detections of the Delta variant in Oregon has risen 692%. Chair Smith, you have many times interjected when you feel that someone has said something inaccurate. However, you only seem to correct the record when they have said something about you. What about misinformation that kills people? Chair Smith and Commissioner Shoal, if you spent even a fraction of the time that you have spent whipping up your base about nonexistent vaccine passports or liking statements such as, if half the population gets vaccinated and they believe it protects them, then there should be no need for the other half to get vaccinated, and I believe my body has the antibodies to fight off viruses and do not need a shot filled with who knows what, on instead addressing the pernicious and utterly fallacious anti-vaccine rhetoric by your supporters, you would save lives, and the lives you'd save would be the same people who vote for you. It's a win-win situation. Come on. Republican Utah Governor Spencer Cox said in regards to anti-vaccination proponents, that kind of stuff is just ridiculous. It's dangerous, it's damaging, and it's killing people. I mean, it's literally killing our supporters, and that makes no sense to me. If he said it, you can too. Thank you.
Up next.
Up next is Michael Weber. Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself. You state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Shannon. Michael Weber, Jennings Lodge. I would like to quote an article from the Birmingham News. Alabama Dr. Brittany Corbio said, "One of the last things the COVID patients do before they're intubated is beg me for the vaccine. I hold their hand and tell them that I'm sorry, but it's too late for that. A few days later, when I call time of death, I hug their family members and tell them the best way to honor their loved ones is to get vaccinated and encourage everyone they know to do the same. They cry, and they tell me they didn't know. They thought it was a hoax. They thought it was political. They thought they wouldn't get as sick. They thought it was just the flu. But they were wrong, and they wish they could go back, but they can't. COVID-19 is still among us. The Delta variant is more infectious and starting to spread widely in Oregon. There is currently no vaccine approved for anyone under the age of 12. With the anti-vaxers and anti-maskers packing the audience at our local school board meetings, our children are put directly in the crosshairs of the virus. And even if those children do not get seriously ill, when they bring home COVID, those who choose not to get vaccinated will fall ill as well. We are at the point where deaths and severe illness from COVID are preventable. According to the CDC, 99% of COVID deaths in the United States in June were people who were not vaccinated, and COVID is now a pandemic of the unvaccinated. Yes, it is a choice not to get the vaccine, but unless you're one of the vanishingly small minority who truly cannot get vaccinated for medical reasons, it is the wrong choice, and true leaders should not be afraid to say so. As the U.S. Senate Minority Leader Mitch McConnell recently said, "Get vaccinated. Ignore all of the other voices that are giving demonstrably bad advice." Although I am a huge supporter of free speech, some speech is harmful to the public as a whole. One does not yell "fire" in a crowded theater for no reason. We should not allow the continued spewing forth of conspiracy and unfounded anti-vax theories in the midst of an ongoing pandemic to go unchallenged. Such language caused the video of a prior business meeting to be removed from YouTube as medical misinformation, requiring the meetings to be posted on local servers. The board owes it to the general welfare of all Clackamas citizens to call attention to this misinformation and have an H3S representative publicly debunk such harmful and deceitful rhetoric. It is also time to plan a town hall to answer questions and address misinformation regarding the vaccine. This is a chance to be proactive in protecting the health and welfare of all citizens of Clackamas County. Thank you.
Christina, who's up next?
Next up is Bill Ware. Bill, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Ware, Damascus.
Christina, could you turn it up?
Commissioner Fisher made an unexpected statement in defense of Commissioner Shoal last week for the first time this year. Perhaps it was a signal that she was easing up in her attacks, therefore creating an illusion of newfound harmony on the commission. But it stopped well short of what is necessary to move beyond the predicament that has occupied this commission and the time of many supporters of Commissioner Shoal. After months of continuous public vilifying of Commissioner Shoal, this was welcome, but it doesn't erase her previous slanderous statements against him, nor does it wipe away the ongoing support that has been given her to this day from this commission as a whole in the effort to unseated him. Commissioner Fisher stated that she wasn't the only one on commission that's been calling for his resignation and shouldn't be singled out for criticism. She is correct to a point. Chair Smith was the first to publicly call for his resignation. Then every single one of you joined in voting to censor him and demanding his resignation. In June, Chair Smith demanded he be stripped of his committee assignments, and you all then followed suit and voted to do that on the spot. He's not treated as an equal, a colleague, but rather as someone who needs to do something to satisfy your craving for his repentance to gain entrance into your club. This is in face of him being the object of ongoing spurless allegations. We need to resolve this conflict. In order to do this, let's first retract the original censor and return Commissioner Shoal's committee assignments. Second, all department heads should either withdraw their demand for his resignation or reaffirm their original censor with explanation. Have an outside investigation into how this rapid and widespread process of unseating him, which would have thereby nullified the will of the voters who placed him in office, was executed. This would include the involvement of any commissioners, department heads, public employees, and committee members. Lastly, what is the relevance of the 10,000 in a single transaction that was given to Commissioner Fisher by a public employee union so soon after the censoring of Mr. Shoal? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I would like to comment on that. I have had many conversations with Commissioner Shoal. He knows exactly what he needs to do to get his liaison duties back. Only thing he has to do is walk across the hall into a fellow commissioner's office and ask. He has refused, he has refused to do that. He has totally refused. If I was stripped of my liaison duties, that's what I do. And oh, by the way, I was when I was in the legislature. I was on Ways and Means Committee, Human Services, and Senator Jackie Winters was the chair. She didn't like the way I vote, so she kicked me off. I went to Jackie, and I said, "Why did you do that?" She explained, I says, "Look, I cannot vote for that in all good conscience. I thought I had sent a vote explanation to you," but it was a communications problem." She put me back on. Commissioner Shoal has the ability to walk across a hallway and engage any one of his fellow commissioners in a conversation. He has not done that. That's all he has to do is to find out how. Up next, Christina.
Last is Connie Lee. Connie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Connie Lee, Lake Oswego. I would like to thank the Commissioners for working so well with Metro, the state government, nonprofits, and other private sources on some important issues in the past. Some Clackamas County Commissioners have not been friendly with Metro, so much so that it cost the taxpayers a lot of money in lawyers' fees. We are all glad this is over, and we all hope that that will never happen again. We have a very important housing program that was passed by Metro and needed some work from all three counties to get it to the next step. I am personally very grateful for the efforts and cooperation that gave us such good results. My adult daughter has a serious mental illness and has been houseless in the past. The housing with wraparound services provided by Metro's housing program is what people like her need to have a stable life. I think many, many people who have adult children or loved ones with problems like my daughter's thank the commission for their past work. And I want to emphasize that these services will be paid for by a tiny wealth tax, not a tax on the average citizen. The Stafford problems were resolved due to a friendly relationship with Metro and the three surrounding cities, as well as the Stafford community. Money has been brought into this county by Metro, the state of Oregon, and other sources because of good working relationships with them. It is important to understand that sitting down and working out the details works so much better than arguing and criticizing other organizations. I truly hope that you will continue with that approach. Thank you for listening. Again, I am Connie Lee.
That's it? That's the end of your list. Thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's up next?
Next, Chair Smith, is County Administrator Update, and I will provide this. I have one note of good news, but it is pretty awesome good news, and I'm happy to share this with you, and I'm going to ask Greg Geist to come forward, too. Clackamas Water Environment Services Capital Program Manager Lynn Chacoing has been named the 2021 Woman of the Year by the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association. This is an organization dedicated to utilities, or the preeminent group of utilities dedicated to water resources in Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. This award recognizes women who have excelled in their career and have made significant achievements and contributions to the water industry. Lynn was honored for serving as a role model and mentor for other women and girls advocating for closing the leadership gap, creating a more equitable society, and contributing back to her community. Lynn will receive her award at the annual national, or the annual conference of the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association in Idaho later this year. This is a big deal. This is a very, very impressive accomplishment, and of course Lynn is one of Greg's managers. Greg is the Director of Water Environment Services. Would you like to say a few more words, please?
Yes, thank you, Gary. Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners. This is a big deal. The PNCWA covers Oregon, Washington, and Idaho, so Seattle, Portland, Boise, Spokane, and they give one of these out a year, and they don't even give it out every year. So, for Lynn to get this, it's a very special thing. She's virtually transformed West's capital program over the last five years. We're building more, we're on time, well, usually on time, almost always on budget, and just the level of rigor that she's brought to our program is being noticed, and I really appreciate that. I did want to read one quick thing. In addition to mentoring young women, Lynn routinely participates in programs designed to encourage minority and female participation in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. Lynn developed an innovative educational program with the Clackamas Academy of Industrial Sciences as part of our solids handling project for high school students designed to inspire the next generation of engineers. Lynn is also the lead for West on the Construction Careers Pathways Project, C2P2, and is always, always looking for ways to reach out and bring young people, particularly women and minorities, into the science and engineering field. So, we're proud and thankful to have her.
That is just remarkable. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming forward with this because your agency is absolutely phenomenal, what you do with the education piece, and I was going to mention this later, but since you're here, Greg, I wanted to mention it now. At the National Association of Counties, you've also received awards for achievement. you've also received awards for achievement. And one was the Wes Solve Summer Waterway Cleanup Series Partnership. Okay, national award there as well. And let me see if I can find the other one. Okay, the Wes's Kellogg Creek WRRF Improvement Project. So what's WRRF mean?
It's a Water Resource Recovery Facility.
Okay.
We take what goes down your toilet, and we make three things: clean water, energy, and biosolids, which is a natural fertilizer.
Well, that is remarkable. And both Commissioner Fisher and I were there to hear, you know, to know that you were noted, your agency. And next year, I hope not only will you get an achievement award, but you'll get like the best-in-show achievement award, best-in-category winner. So keep it up because you guys do great work.
They do. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative of this. This is just marvelous. In fact, I'm surprised. What a nice, nice surprise this morning. I think maybe the BCC needs to make a special shout out to this woman, maybe coming at the next business meeting and honoring, you know, acknowledging that yes, this can be done in our own backyard.
Yeah, she's going to be receiving the award in September 12th. So I thought maybe we could come back when she has the award.
Let's do that. That would be nice. Thanks, Greg. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, that's great that she will have an opportunity to recognize her, to pass on our congratulations. And I've known Lynn for a while now, so it's just fantastic to know that and well-deserved award that she received. So that's fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Congratulations to Lynn. That's my good news. Next is Commissioner Communications. Chair Smith, please go ahead.
Great, we have an order. I believe up first with Commissioner Communication is Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Want to make sure I can heard because I keep getting these notes that say, please pull your mic closer. We're having trouble hearing you. So if Christina shakes her head, I know that I'm good. I, we've had a lot of discussion regarding the homeless services measure and the priorities of this board in implementing the local implementation plan. I was just reviewing the statement that the board issued, and I just want to share it with people. It says, "We can no longer wait. Our community is resourceful, and we will find a way to serve our most vulnerable residents. Although we cannot access regional funds immediately to address the housing crisis through county resources, we will take care of our people." That paragraph was in response to us becoming aware that the resources from Metro would not be available starting July 1st, that they would come in in a much slower process than we were anticipating. And they would mostly, they would come in this fiscal year, but not until April, which is the last quarter of the fiscal year of 2022. We go on to say, "We are committed to not displacing residents and have directed county staff to explore providing gap funding from county funds to maintain current housing services and ramp up services as outlined in our community-led Clackamas County Supportive Housing Services Local Implementation Plan. To continue our momentum, we have a procurement process underway to fund organizations with expertise in supportive housing, wraparound supports, housing navigation, and more. We intend to prioritize this important work and provide the services laid out in our local implementation plan." So our commission has continued to enforce that policy and has continued to assert our statement and our interest in those words. I believe it was yesterday, however, I became aware that we were terminating our procurement process for the homeless services measure, which in my mind is contrary to the statement that we gave to the residents of Clackamas County, to our stakeholders, and to our employees. Our, the termination came from staff. And the reality is that we simply, with the $10 million that was pieced together by my trusted colleagues, Commissioner Savas and Commissioner Schrader, that we all approved, I want to make that clear, we all approved that, it's not possible to proceed with the implementation of the local plan. It's just not possible. So that procurement process was terminated, and there is great concern. We've heard from, I know my fellow, we haven't had a chance to discuss it. We have received letters from providers. We have received input from people that are aware of this, and there is deep concern. I appreciate my colleagues rolling up sleeves, like we have good sleeves that we've been rolling up. Yesterday, I had mentioned that I'm interested in looking for bridge funding from private partners, potentially health insurance companies or business or private foundations. And I am busy on the phone, calling, reaching out. I have a meeting with one healthcare provider on Monday to discuss this. I'm looking for other folks out there that are willing to share the risk, the risk of, well, what happens if the funding doesn't come in? Can Clackamas County responsibly commit to resources that we aren't completely sure are going to be there? It's an uncertain time. There's a pandemic that we are hopefully, hope to God, recovering from. But there's risk there. I get it. We have wildfires. We are different than the other three counties. We have some serious concerns in Clackamas County. So I've been reaching out, looking for others who would be willing to share the risk so that our staff can have assurance from this commission that they can allocate more than $10 million. Because if all they can allocate is $10 million of a $24 million local implementation plan, it's impossible. It's impossible. When I voted to support the gap funding plan presented by Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Savas, I had previously talked to staff, and I understood at that time that if we were to approve this, they were going to have contracts issued and negotiated within a week. That's what I understood. I believed our statement that we made. I believed our commitment, and I know in my heart, the heart of every person on this commission, so I know that the will is there. But given the fact that we did not follow through with our commitment, that we were proceeding with the procurement process, I am compelled to change my vote in supporting that plan to a no. And I'm looking forward to next week when we are going to continue to discuss this. There's a lot of options. We are looking at Commissioner Schrader and I, just got back from Washington, D.C., where a big part of the discussion is what you can and should use with American recovery dollars. Much of our system was expanded because we had hotel motel vouchers that came from FEMA dollars and because we have those people that are currently sheltered based on those resources. In my mind, it only makes sense that we recover with those dollars, which can help us address that very important critical need. If we did that one piece, according to my conversations with staff, we would have been able to proceed with the procurement process. So I'm sounding the alarm. I am respectfully letting my colleagues know that that's my intention, and I am thankful for the heart of this commission because I really believe we are going to get through this and do what we said we are going to do. It might be a little rocky for a little bit, but we're going to get there. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, Gary, could you help me out here with the procurement process? Because I had conversations this morning that indicate that there's going to be movement forward. And that was with Jill, and that was with, oh, I'm going blank. I'm sorry. I still must be jet-legged. But our PGA folks, and that is in the process now, as well as some restoration of dollars to some of the nonprofits who have been concerned from human services to get those dollars in there. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, so the procurement process has not terminated. The request for proposals that originally went out before you board, and we were notified of the reduction in funding coming from Metro, the request for proposals process was terminated because we had no longer met the requirements of the request for proposals process because the funding revenue was not what was announced in that process. Therefore, to follow the law, we didn't have a choice. We had to terminate that request for proposals process. Staff is now undergoing a new request for proposals process that addresses the level of funding we do have and plans to go out in the next two or three weeks. There's a community meeting already scheduled for next week to discuss this with those interested parties to give them information about that process. So it's semantics, but words matter, as you all know.
Right.
So the procurement process is still in place. The particular request for proposals had to be terminated. We legally had to do that because the amount of funding we proposed in the original process is now not the same. So by law, we have to go out for a new request for proposals.
So it's a technicality, is what my understanding was. And I'm okay. So that's good. That's moving forward. And I just want to appreciate Commissioner Fisher's, you know, knowledge that we worked really hard with the advisory committee and to really kind of come up with this dollars. Another thing that happened that I wanted to ask about is we did receive a letter from our mayors. And I appreciate, I really do appreciate Commissioner Fisher going to the nonprofits. The mayors are behind us, and I am actually planning on making some phone calls to see if our cities who have supported this might be willing to also use some dollars from their funding because it became very obvious to me from their letter that they want to see this move forward. So I am going to commit to making personal phone calls to every mayor, and I'm going to commit to really asking them directly, will they please help us out with this? I don't know if it can be a loan. I don't know what that might look like yet. But I think that, you know, the name here together means something. And, you know, we've heard that with the pandemic. We're all in this together. So I would like to move forward, maybe with Commissioner Savas, and talking about this a little more extensively at C4 as well. Because the other issue we have is it has been our urban mayors that have reached out. And I'm wondering if our rural mayors, I think that they're probably experiencing the same kinds of issues. And as I said, most of this money is within the UGB. We were hoping that we could, if we had gotten the revenue stream that we had been, I'm going to use a word here, promised, that has not happened, we could have also fulfilled other promises to our rural areas as we move forward with helping folks across this entire county with the houseless issue. So I was pleased with the information I found out from Jill and Sue this morning. I've been working on it. I know that Commissioner Fisher diligently attended a lot of the ARPA dollars. I think that there is also some possibility there as well, but we're being cautious. I know this county. They like caution when it comes to taxpayer dollars. It's significant caution. So I don't think ARPA is necessarily off the table, but we have to make sure with that that we're dotting every i, crossing every t, so we can make sure that the federal government knows that we are appropriately using their dollars. The information we got from NACO is that is a possibility. So I'm also committing to making phone calls to my contacts from Economic Development because I'm vice chair of that committee and the other committees in the board, and working with the Large Urban County Caucus I brought home with me today. I'll talk about it at Commissioner Communication, a whole list of how other counties are using ARPA dollars to help us guide through, guide us through that, to see what the potential is for that. I know that Metro, I hope they will keep their promises to, not just for us, but for all the unfortunate people who have been experiencing houselessness in this region. So promises kept are important.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, we're not up for public comment. We're just responding to Commissioner Fisher's statement.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm a little bit at a loss to, on how to really address this. I appreciate Commissioner Fisher's passion as our liaison on the supportive housing services. I found it was a little bit shocking to first receive a letter from Metro saying, you know, the money's not going to come, essentially, on time. And during our budget meetings in May, I believe we had a discussion, and as the Housing Authority Board, we were discussing our budget and trying to accommodate what, or foresee, what dollars would actually be coming. And we were anticipating $24 million. And the letter indicated that that was not going to come. And we were trying to, at that time, learn, and since then, learn as to what will come and when will it, you know, how much and when. And we're still not even clear today for that. So I don't want to take any effort here to criticize, you know, any jurisdiction for that misunderstanding or that slip up, but that certainly was not an error on anyone here at the county. I would say that as Commissioner Fisher may have been very close to this as our liaison, I would hope that maybe that information would have been conveyed to us in advance of the letter. And as, again, as our liaison to that effort. But I found it striking that during that May discussion for the Housing Authority, instead of trying to say, okay, we're not going to get 24, you know, what can we put together? That the conversation went the opposite way, suggesting that actually 32 million is coming, not 24, in the face of a letter from Metro saying it's not going to show up. So when I hear other organizations promoting that there's 32 million the county's going to get, I'm looking forward to that day so we can do just what we set out to do, so we can meet that. I'm not sure exactly. Commissioner Fisher said quite a bit there. And I, some of it does not really resonate with me, so I will definitely make sure that I take those statements one by one and see what she means by that because that's certainly not consistent with my memory. I would say that the contracts, I would say that the contracts, this board made it very clear as a housing authority, sitting as a housing authority that day, that the most important thing were the people, whether they're senior citizens or the homeless, that are currently housed in shelters, in hotels, was the highest priority. And we recognize that. And so that is what we committed, funding, and those contracts are being exercised. There's a contract associated with that. Those are being done. We have the assurances. Commissioner Schrader and I, with the help of the administrator, as the Administrator's Task Force Group, met with staff, say, what do you need to implement that goal that you heard from the county commissioners that we all voted on? And they gave us the bare bone minimum of $10 million. So Commissioner Schrader and I asked, and then we figured out a way to finance that with the $10 million that we really don't have, that we're really patching together in anticipation of those dollars rolling in. So I appreciate Commissioner Fisher recognizing that we are genuinely committed to this, and that's true. I'm very confident that everyone on this dais is 100% committed, as well as our staff. But to represent it as such, as Commissioner Fisher did, I have trouble with. I really do. I endorsed Commissioner Fisher's effort on Tuesday when she indicated that she would like to reach out to other organizations to bring in some funding. And I hope those are funding in the form of contributions to supply or provide services that we can implement, help implement. The word ramp up the implementation plan, regardless of the dollars showed up, the word ramp was a word based on funding and based on staffing and resources. So I believe we're doing that, but we're doing it at a much slower rate, unfortunately, until those dollars really roll in. So Gary, thank you for your explanation. It was accurate. If there's a technicality and the dollars don't show up and that RFP went out in anticipation of those dollars, I think what Commissioner Fisher is really relating to is a technicality, a legal technicality, a requirement. And those RFPs will be issued in, as the dollars roll in, as I understand it. That's certainly not my skill set. It's not my knowledge base, so I don't profess to know that. I rely upon our staff. As I stated on Tuesday, and I'll say it again, this asking us to disperse or create out of thin air $32 million of services without the resources is demoralizing. It's demoralizing to each and every one of us, as well as our staff. And I would think at that some point, there would be greater understanding and cooperation amongst us to work as a board and as a team in a constructive atmosphere, and not to be surprised, and to thoroughly vet all of these things, and be cognizant that the fact that $24 million didn't show up in July, just a couple hundred thousand dollars showed up, is not a fault of Clackamas County. Anyone on this dais, or any of the employees at Clackamas County, or any of the citizens, or the volunteers, or any of the nonprofits that provide services, it's not their fault. But I just find it striking to somehow withdraw your support and your vote on something that we're trying to work as a team. And to do it in such a way is just, I'm just astonished and disappointed.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. I'd like to offer up some points of clarification that I too find disturbing from my colleague. We did secure bridge funding. In fact, we approved that today in the consent agenda of $3 million with an additional option for $2 more million. We also have set aside an additional $1 million reserved in our general fund should anybody not be able to continue to live in the homes that we are already providing. Nobody will be kicked out into the streets. That is a promise. Metro's own admission says that the tax revenues are not coming in as promised. And this county is not in a position to backfill on Metro's failed promises of taxes. And we will not, why would we ever do that? As Commissioner Savas said, they promised us $24 million in July. You're supposed to ramp up your services, and that's one of the reasons why we find ourselves in this situation. Gary, how much money did we actually get this month or this summer?
It was actually slightly higher than we were originally told. It was $250,000.
So the promise of 24 million has actualized of $250,000. And I'm not sure that is a very scant amount of when you look at the overall budget crisis. And I tell you what's demoralizing is one commissioner trying to position the rest of us as not caring, as of not working on this. And I find a great exception to that. This board has done everything humanly and beyond possible to make sure that our nonprofits who are delivering the services, by the way, not the nonprofits who want to deliver services, or the nonprofits who have no business delivering services, or the nonprofits who are butting their heads under, like a Campbell under the tent, out of their league, making all kinds of noise that somehow this commission isn't doing our jobs. I find great exception to that, and I won't tolerate it. I won't tolerate the colleague to my left saying what she did. I find it unseemly. And I will counter that as long as the comments are coming. Commissioner Scholl, you're up next in Commissioner's comments.
Yes, thank you. And good morning, Clackamas County. On parks and recreation, Tuesday, I had the pleasure of a tour of four Milwaukee parks by the personnel of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. I'm telling you, those parks, four parks, are absolutely beautiful assets. And I thank the district advisory committee members and the NCPRD staff members who gave the tour. They're doing a great job, and thank you all for what you do for the district. Get out there this summer and enjoy those parks. They're very, very nice. On first responders, last Saturday, Estacada held its first responders appreciation day. Mayor Sean Drinkwine presented awards to firefighters, police, and to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Department for their extraordinary efforts in keeping the city safe and secure, especially during the times last year during fires and storms. Mayor Drinkwine also thanked the Estacada Community Watch, which has the mission to unite the citizens, the local businesses, law enforcement, and the local government, and to encourage unity among the citizens of Estacada. The Estacada Community Watch played a large role in responding to fires last year, and they helped serve thousands of meals to needy displaced people. The ECW, this is a type of organization that every city should look at forming to enhance coordination of residents in emergency situations and for promoting safety. Mayor Scott Kaiser from Malala is also working on forming a similar organization for his town, and I encourage every city in Clackamas County to look at doing the same. And to Mayor Drinkwine and the people of Estacada for your hospitality, and I thank you very much for the very nice time last weekend. And thank you, Estacada Community Watch, for your historic efforts. On business appreciation, a special shout out to Columbia Helicopters for the Boeing Vertol firefighting assets they had on the bootleg fire, and a shout out to Helicopter Transport Services for the Sikorsky Sky Crane assets they have on the Fremont-Wenamena Fire just east of Roseburg. These heavy lift assets are located at the Aurora Airport, which is just outside the county. But many of their employees are Clackamas County residents, and we're thankful for these companies and for their capabilities and for the dedication of their personnel. On public safety, nearly 85% of wildland fires in the United States are caused by human activity. We cannot emphasize safety this summer enough. Take precautions. Do it now. Be safe. And a thank you to Clackamas County Forester Andrew Dobemeyer for the tour of Clackamas County forest lands this last week. We also saw state and federal lands. Be safe. The loss out there is huge, and we cannot afford to lose one more tree. On illegal dumping, I hear more and more reports on this problem in the county. If you see it, call Dump Stoppers at 503-650-3333. Let's get this problem stopped. Another reminder on the fair and rodeo, 26 days from now, it begins at the Canby Fairgrounds, 17 through 21 August. I'm going to be there. I hope everybody can be there also. One more reminder on the Portland Water Bureau Filtration Plant Project. 5 August is the Cottrell and Borning CPO meetings on this issue. I'll be there. If you have a concern, please get ahold of me. Let's talk about it. On housing and homelessness and public involvement, our current expenditures on hotels and the high cost of supportive housing projects is not sustainable. As my other colleagues have said this morning, we've had problems with funding. Someday, those federal dollars may dry up. We need sustainable solutions to supportive housing. And I'm asking citizens of the county who have ideas for solutions to contact me. I want to hear what those ideas are. Let's talk about it as soon as possible. And for the thought of the week, as we are bombarded by information in our society today, concentrate on what is truly important and learn to be indifferent to what makes no difference. Don't let superfluous static distract you from what is really important. And finally, God bless Clackamas County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to point out that right after this meeting, directly after, Commissioner Schrader and I will be meeting as the Housing Task Force Group to once again discuss and figure out how to better implement the supportive housing services plan. So we have dedicated a lot of time. I want to thank Commissioner Schrader for her extra effort, Gary, staff, everyone, for their really, I've never seen such cooperation and commitment to this. So I just want to recognize everyone's efforts. So thank you all. What's come to light in this regard is a slight, somewhat related, as we're hearing other jurisdictions and governments around the country, and even here in Oregon, with all these CARESAC dollars coming in and all these public funds coming in, there's more money perhaps out there in the system than there's ever been before. And unfortunately, with that sometimes comes fraud and comes a number of other challenges and problems, misuse of funds. I, you know, personally took it on as initiative when I first come on the commission 10 years ago to make sure we really brought in a greater independent auditing facility or capability in this county, which we did not have at the time. And I thank all of my colleagues, past and present, for supporting that effort and growing that. So we added one internal auditor several years ago, and recently we approved and we're adding a second one this year. So I'm excited by that. But with all these dollars coming in, and I know we have limited capacity, I will be really making a concerted effort to make sure that somehow, whether I appeal to the state, or the district attorney, or the Attorney General, or whatever it may be, for any means possible to take a deeper look and find out what precautions we can take when we administer public dollars out for services rendered or construction projects, whatever that may be. These are public dollars that need to be, we're the watchdogs for them. We're responsible for those dollars. And I am just very concerned, as we're hearing other jurisdictions have their little flare-ups or dollars being misspent or misused. That even includes people that are applying for unemployment, you know, and so this is not limited to government. It's just limited to the abuse of those dollars. That we need to take every step going forward. So I will be talking with everyone, procurement, I'll be talking with our auditing department, I'll be talking to everyone I know on how we can ramp up, take every precaution possible, and raise the bar, and not have the minimum procurement requirements, but improve that. Ramp that up, because I don't want to be, I don't want Clackamas County to even be in the newspaper for misuse of funds. And we need to do everything in our power to make sure that every dollar, wherever it's designed to go, makes us to its destination, to provide the service or the project in which it's designed for. So that is my commitment. Those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you, colleagues. Commissioner Fisher and I had a great time at the National Association of Counties Conference. We both attended numerous meetings and met with our colleagues from across the nation, as well as our local colleagues from the Association of Oregon Counties. So let me start out with some other awards that Clackamas County received. We received an award from the National Association for our motor carrier safety program, GO, Department of Transportation and Development. We received an award for our GO teams, which were the mental health teams that were sent throughout the county. Okay? Pretty much to make sure that people were doing okay in the middle of the pandemic because of the stress of being isolated. We actually, Human Services as well, received an award from our strangulation response initiative, and that really has to do with women's services and the fact that strangulation is part of what happens when people are being attacked by someone, an abuser. So that was a wonderful thing. I already talked a little bit about WES. We also, from Business and Community Services, got an award for our COVID-19 business support program, No Small Business Left Behind. And then also Social Services, we got a school milk dispenser program, which was a pretty neat thing, too. I didn't even realize that we were doing that with our schools. So I want to thank all of our folks, all of our staff who does this great work, because you're not just getting recognized here locally, you are getting recognized nationally. A few things I wanted to mention. I'm vice chair of the International Economic Development Task Force, and we had a session on international trade in the post-pandemic world. And basically, we focused on how counties can become key players in the global economy and leverage international engagement to spur economic recovery in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I will be reporting to the local chambers of commerce about what I've learned. Part of the conversation was how do we move those middle businesses actually to get them excited about actually being part of a larger export economy? And we've been working on this for a while, so I'm glad we've been able to do that. Also attended the Western Interstate Region Board of Directors meeting. That was important because they talked about federal lands, a wildfire playbook, and preparedness for ransomware, some of the, and as well as infrastructure. And this is all the states west of the Mississippi that get together as part of a larger region. The other thing that's a little bit pertinent to what we're talking about today with ARPA dollars, I brought home counties and the American Rescue Plan, key investments in innovative practices. So I'm hopeful that this will help us with our next discussion that Commissioner Savas and I will be having, to take a look at what other counties are doing, which will give us a pathway of what we can be doing with our ARPA dollars, and to see what we can do to help that out. Finally, something I've been on my soapbox on for a long time, and this was counties getting started, a prenatal to three guidebook. It's probably because I'm a grandma. I got little kids, got a little 18 and a half year old, another one on the way. But basically, this really is talking about how do we work with all of our providers and our nonprofits to really work on the well-being of young children? And one of the reasons I was interested in this, that there is a huge workforce component with this, one of the things we have found out in the pandemic is that because people can't find childcare.
Yes.
Okay, they can't get to work. It's a huge problem. It's now getting national press. I hope that I can work with the Safe Kids Coalition. I couldn't make their last meeting. I bet, I think Commissioner Fisher, you probably made it, or maybe Paul did. I think this is, hopefully, as they move forward with what we want to be doing for kids, I hope this becomes part of that whole portfolio because it will bring the business community on board, I believe, in a really big way. So that's my report from NACO. Thank you, colleagues, for allowing me to be there and allowing me to go. I'm sorry I had a plane. I got trapped in DC with a malfunctioning plane, which was a little nerve wracking. So I came back a little later than I thought, but thank you for indulging me with that.
Glad you made it back.
Yeah, me too. I was getting a little worried there, you know, when the pilot says they should have fixed the plane yesterday. I was like, do I really want to get on that plane? But I did, for the sake of the county.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. You know, this has just been a great week with some of the accomplishments we've been able to do. And I'm going to start by saying, last night, I had dinner with the Clackamas County Fair Board and Executive Director, and it was a very good time. They presented to me their concerns and their aspirations, and we talked about it. We're going to talk through it. This board is going to meet with them right after fair at our normal yearly meeting, and they are going to present some information to us, and we're going to present some information back to them on how we're going to renovate and the upcoming fair. If you're not aware, Senator Kenimer and Representative Christine Drazen has allocated $4.79 million of the state ARPA money to our county fair for the construction of a livestock barn and an RV park, which is both desperately needed. And they're sharpening their pencil to see how much a livestock barn is going to cost. If any of you know or are aware of construction nowadays, that seems to be an elusive mark to get an actual cost of the fair barn. But I think this board is committed to making sure with possibly But I think this board is committed to making sure with possibly some of our ARPA dollars to make sure that project is completed to fruition. That was just a fun, fun deal. As Commissioner Scholl had mentioned, we went out on a great forestry tour on Monday and took half the day. We were clear up at the, one of the tallest points that you can access by road in Clackamas County, we're about 4,200 feet elevation. And we were able to see the vastness of the Beechey Creek Fire. You could practically reach across the road and touch Marion County. That's how high we were up there. We were able to see thousands and thousands and tens of thousands of acres that are burned, and sadly, that forest will remain standing and burned and, and unfortunately be the fuel for more fires in our future. The private companies are logging as fast as they can. However, it's our federal BLM and state forest, uh, uh, Forest Service, federal Forest Service lands that are in question. And, uh, we're hoping that our federal government will take care of their forests, but that remains doubtful. We were so high up, you could see Mount Hood, Mount St. Helens, Mount Adams, Mount Jefferson, and the North Sister Peak. That is how high up we were. And it was just hugely eye opening and almost, um, emotional in a way. And the reason why this is significant? Clackamas County owns, in our county, we have 1.2 million acres. 70% of that acreage is forested. And so when we talk about the wildfires to come, it's significant. And with that in mind, another good thing happened this week. This board has approved the Emergency Preparedness Council to be consistent of 15 individuals from across our county with somewhat expertise and volunteers to help us move forward on the mitigation of any emergency, whether it be fire, ice storm heat, or God forbid, the Cascadia event. And within that 15 member commission, we will have five subcommittees, and each commissioner will represent a, one of these subcommittees of subject matter, for instance, of training, of communications, to be determined by this 15 member council. In addition, our staff has designated, and there's a map, I'm so excited about this map, has designated a map of Clackamas County of 21 zones for emergency management. And they are designated according to transportation routes, rivers, bridges, and natural geographic contours, that each one of those 21 zones, by the time we're done planning, can exist if they are isolated from the, another part of the county due to a road going out, a bridge going out. And we have plans in place to make sure that happens. Another really exciting thing that's been so close, dear and near to my heart, is the Founder's Clinic. The Founder's Clinic was established the last time I was a commissioner, and it's a clinic started by doctors in Clackamas County to give free medical care to the people who most desperately need it the most. These are the people that fall through all the cracks. And it's located on Malala Avenue, and they're renting a space. That space is no longer adequate. And about, oh, maybe two months ago, they invited me to, for a tour of that facility. And then they invited me, Martha Spears, the executive director, invited me over to Clackamas Community College to see the new space that President Tim Cook has offered them, already constructed space to move the clinic. However, that move, transfer, and remodel is about 1.2 million dollars. I'm going, oh, holy cow, where are we going to find 1.2 million dollars? We just don't have it. Well, our legislative partners, Representatives Mark Meek and I believe Representative Salinas, is that right? Approved $600,000 of their ARPA funds to the Founder's Clinic. Well, we're still short about half. Well, lo and behold, guess what our staff did? Rod Cook at H3S applied for, through HUD, for a community block grant of $650,000. It was approved by us this week, so they can get started on that clinic. And I talked to Martha Spears yesterday, and she is so excited because now, whereas at the bones to get them started, they want to have advanced medical and dental equipment, and they want to hire a full-time nurse practitioner. So now with this, uh, 1.05 million dollars, they're going to be able to go out and get grants at medical foundations who are interested in completing the projects, because the foundation says, yeah, we like your project, we could fund this, but we don't want to be the first to do it. So that is very exciting to me. Uh, I'm going to be attending a kickoff event for them in September. I think they're going to have a fun run and try to raise more money locally, so they're going, it's just, it's just a marvelous, marvelous, um, project going out there. In closing, I want to say regarding the bootleg fire, uh, to say that the massive bootleg fire in southeastern Oregon has taxed the limits of public safety resources would be a gross understatement, said Lane County Sheriff's Office on a social media site. What had happened recently, and this is a newspaper article from, uh, July 21st yesterday. On Sunday, July 18, a firefighter working the fire became separated from his crew and was reported missing. As soon as this information was received from the incident command post, a search for the missing firefighter commenced. Deputy Josh Mars, a trained Lane County Sheriff's Search and Rescue Coordinator, along with Clackamas County-owned Sheriff Deputy, Deputy Ben Toops, took the lead and quickly established a search and rescue. As Clackamas County sheriffs, some of our folks are down aiding in mutual aid agreements that we have with other counties to offer help. I'm happy to say that an Air National Guard helicopter located a thermal image on a nearby bridge, believing to be the missing firefighter. The officers then went out and picked him up, and everybody is safe and sound. And I want to thank our public safety people, as in our fires here last September, they were instrumental in our evacuations during our ice storms. They went out and did wellness checks for people who were without power for a very long time, offered blankets, water, medical, uh, supplies, and anything else that they could give. This has just been an excellent week at Clackamas County, and I'm so happy that I have the opportunity to serve as your chair. Thank you all for listening, and with that, we are adjourned.